And good evening, everybody. Welcome back to day number two of our candidate forums. My name is Tony Felker, President and CEO of the Frisco Chamber of Commerce, and we welcome you back as we try to help educate all of you on the issues, the candidates, as we are back in election season. So, we hope everybody got registered. If you're not registered by this time, unfortunately, you're going to be too late for the May 1st election, but we urge you to get registered regardless. Please remember, May 1st is Election Day, and early voting starts on April 19th. So, I just want to welcome everybody back. Once again, our job here is to help educate you on the issues so that you're familiar with the issues, as well as the candidates and where they speak. Last night, we covered Collin College Board of Trustees and the Frisco ISD Board of Trustees. If you missed that, we have it out there. You can find it. We urge you to pass it on, send it to your neighbors, friends, family. And tonight, we're covering Frisco City Council candidates. So, we are glad you are with us, and we're going to go ahead and get this show on the road. We had our two moderators from last night. We brought them back, so I remained in the penalty box, apparently. We have our two moderators tonight, so I want to turn it back over. First of all, Ms. Crystal Howard, our past chair and publisher, DFW Publisher, Community Impact Newspaper, and also Mr. Christopher Lee, our Director of Governmental Affairs. So, with no further ado, madam and sir, we're going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Tony.
Well, we're back at it.
We are. So, Tony said we're back in election season. It feels like we never left, but here we are.
Honestly, it doesn't. I mean, it was just, what, a few months ago that we were in this room doing this with two other candidates?
That's right.
So, it's been a wild ride.
That's one way to put it.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, 2020 didn't disappoint. Hopefully, 2021 does disappoint, if we're following that logic.
I digress.
Let's not make predictions.
Yeah. So, on that note, do you want to go ahead and introduce our two candidates tonight? And go through a little bit of what we're going to be looking at this evening?
Yeah, so we will get into two races this evening, but it's important to talk about format and kind of set the table for tonight. So, first, a quick disclaimer. As Tony said, I am the publisher for Community Impact Newspaper, and we, as a publication, much like the chamber, do not endorse candidates. We believe firmly in getting the information out there so that you can get to know the candidates, and we hope that you go to the polls and make an informed decision, whatever that may be.
Yeah.
And as far as the format tonight, it is structured in such a way to give everybody a fair opportunity. We're looking for substance in our answers, and I think the format supports that, I hope.
Yep.
So, here's the way it will run. Each candidate will get one minute for an introduction, and then we have a list of questions. They will get one minute to respond to those questions.
Yep.
Now, if that substance isn't quite there, and we need to follow up a little bit, then they will get an additional 30 seconds to respond, but their opponent will also get 30 seconds on the topic.
We've got to keep it fair and balanced, so you both get the same amount of time throughout the course of the evening, so we wanted to make sure we kind of outline that for you at the start, so.
That's right. And then, in close, you'll get two minutes. But before we close, each candidate will get the opportunity to ask their opponent a question.
So, if there's something that we didn't cover that you think we should have, you can, you get the opportunity to ask your opponent that question, so.
It could be fun, what's your favorite pizza? Or it could be substantive, up to you.
Totally up to you. So, be tame, but it'll be up to you, so. Awesome. Well, I think that's most of the format.
Yep.
Tony Felker, our wonderful leader over here, just off-screen, so you won't see him on the Facebook or on the YouTube Live, but he's our timekeeper this evening. When you have one-minute responses or your introduction, you'll have a signal at 15 seconds left. And if you, during your closing, he'll signal you at 30 seconds left, and then he will ring the wonderful cowbell if you have run out of time, and that is your signal to stop talking. So, we do have a little bit of a strict schedule we want to keep tonight so that we don't keep anybody too long. We do want to respect your time, and we thank you for hanging with us while we started just a little bit late this evening. So, with that, I think we're ready to go ahead and dive in. Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. So, our candidates in place one is where we will start, and we have incumbent John Keating and challenger JP Scatty. So, thank you, gentlemen, both, for coming tonight. To get started, our first question, or first, your introductions, you will have one minute. Mr. Keating, you go first.
Well, thank you to the chamber for hosting. My name is John Keating. Many of you know my story. Leslie and I moved here back in May of 1999, so we've been Frisco residents for 20 years, raised our two sons here, Zach and Ryan, a 13-year Army veteran, Gulf War veteran, and served the community on my HOA, on the PTA. Very proud to have received the Texas PTA Lifetime Member Award for the fundraising I worked for Spirits Elementary, and of course, now serving on your Frisco City Council for the past 10 years, and looking forward to serving you for three more. Thank you.
Wow, kept it under his one minute. I'm impressed.
No one's more surprised than me.
All right, Mr. Scatty.
Well, thank you very much, Frisco Chamber of Commerce, and thanks to Councilman Keating and myself for both being here in the chamber. I am JP Scatty. I've been a resident of Frisco for about three years, and I feel like I'm a fresh voice for Frisco. Professionally, I work for American Eagle and as a flight dispatcher in the operations, I'd like to call myself the invisible captain on the ground. And that position requires an attention to detail and responsibility, and a couple of key principles, I should say, that are part of, obviously, being a city councilman, is attention to detail and proper planning. So, I grew up in Chicago, but I couldn't be happier to be here in Frisco, where the springtime is much more pleasant, and also the winter time, and I look forward to serving you as a city councilman in place one.
Well, and I apologize. I said it wrong. It was the one thing I said I was going to get right. Mr. Scatty?
Yes.
Okay.
I would have gotten that wrong, so I'm glad that I was on your shoulders.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for having my back.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and just dive into the questions, if y'all are ready for that portion of our evening. Our first question is going to, we're going to alternate back and forth, so we'll start with you, JP, because I'm not going to try to mess up your last name. But what are three words that would describe your leadership style?
Go back to attention to detail. I would also use communication and accountability. This would be the three words that I would use. So, communication, attention to detail, which is, I guess, more than one word, but attention to detail, communication, and accountability, which are all key principles and important things that anybody who's going to be a leader in the city, regardless of it's city council or department head, or even the mayor, is going to have to deal with. So, those how I would, those would be three words that I would use to describe my leadership style.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Keating?
Well, I would certainly agree with integrity and accountability. I would probably add transparency to that in government. You know, we practice full disclosure and do our best to include our citizens, invite them to city council, the checkbook's online. Budget season comes, we invite everyone to participate. We've got great boards and commissions, a lot of fantastic volunteers. And so, I think part of that is that, is leading by example, and leading with integrity, and leading with the understanding about accountability, and with transparency, with, you know, running an inclusive government, and bringing, inviting everyone to participate, tend the meetings, volunteer, and build the city that we have.
Great. All right, so next question. Frisco often touts the importance of partnerships in building the city into what it is today. What is one example of a time you led a collaborative effort and a partnership to make your community better? Mr. Keating?
Well, that's a great question. Frisco, we've certainly cracked the code on public-private partnerships here in Frisco, certainly with the Hunt family, with FC Dallas, and the soccer stadium, Soccer Hall of Fame, also with, clearly with the Jones family, the Cowboys facility, the Star. So, very excited about all those things. When I first came on council, we were going to be hosting the Division One football game for the first time, and my goal was to turn that game into a bowl game, not just for the players and the coaches, but also for our residents, to give Frisco a true bowl game experience. So, ever since that first game with Northeast Washington State and Delaware, which was an incredible game, we've done a great job. That's brought in about $9 million to the economy. We've provided Cowboy hats to both teams for the entire time. Shout out to Justin Hats for their work with that, and very proud of that and very proud of the team we built.
Okay, and same question to you, JP.
Could you repeat the question, Crystal?
Sure. So, Frisco touts its partnerships and how it's built the city. What's a time or example that you personally have led a collaborative effort and partnership that made your community a better place?
Well, one of the things I look back to is my experience as a journalist and working within a radio, local radio station in Columbus, Indiana. And we had the opportunity to participate in a Q-Mix, what was called Q-Mix Musical Fireworks, which is the largest fireworks display set to music in southern Indiana. And for those of you who don't know who, what, where Columbus is, is, it's about 45 minutes south of Indianapolis and the home of former Vice President Mike Pence. And so, the goal was, obviously, to work with the city of Columbus and collaborate with them months in advance. Usually, our meetings would start in January to make sure that we had all the safety taken care of as far as having police officers work the event, as well as vendors. And I was just fortunate enough to play a small role in that. And every year, 25,000 to 30,000 people show up to that event each year, and I was grateful that I had the opportunity to participate in that.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much for both of your responses. JP, this is for alternating back and forth. We'll start with you. You're a newcomer, and something, something that is a little different, you want to shake things up, is what you've stated previously. So, what is something that your opponent has done that you've liked? And what is something that you would have done differently than your opponent?
Well, obviously, there's no question that when I think of Veterans Affairs, the first person that I think of is John Keating. He's done a masterful job, and everything that he says, he does. He keeps his word to the veterans and the city of Frisco, and that's something that I'll always admire and be grateful for. Now, and as far as something that I changed, there's certainly, I want to leave it with a caveat that there's certainly a lot of challenges to being a city councilman, and there are pros and cons to everything, and that he certainly has had to weigh that for the last 10 years. But something that I may change is when we look at Wade Park and where we started as far as, I remember reading an article about Stan Thomas, the developer of that development, and I certainly would have held more caution, especially after the article before, a year before the development came out where he said bankruptcy is your friend. So, I would have probably exercised a little more caution in moving forward with that development after those comments came out.
Mr. Keating, similar question. I want to word it a little differently, but you've said you've been on council, I think we're rounding up to 10, nine, somewhere in there, but you've been on council for about 10 years.
Yes, sir.
What is one thing you're proud of? And what is something that you wish that you could take back and maybe improve on?
Well, there's certainly a lot to be proud of here in the city. You know, I try to be a team player. I have a hard time kind of taking credit for all the stuff on my own, but have been part of some of the, really, some of the most incredible things that we've been able to do in the city. First and foremost, shutting down X side. It's shut down, it's not coming back. You know, bringing the, turning the Division One football game into the bowl game that it is, that brought us the Frisco Bowl. Opening three fire stations since I've been on council. Just fantastic stuff like that. Bringing UNT North Campus here, they've broken ground, are going vertical. And then, of course, the thing that right now is, makes the headlines almost every week, is PGA America. They're going vertical. It's going to be just the most incredible facility I think anyone has ever seen. Whether you play golf or not, you're going to love it. It's going to be very, very exciting.
And I am going to follow up on that one, just because we did have a kind of a two-part question. What is something that you probably would have improved on over the time that you've served? Maybe something that you found as a challenge that you wish you could have done better?
Well, you know, JP mentioned Wade Park. That certainly is one thing. And then, you know, Grand Park, I think we needed to communicate a little bit better to the citizens that we're waiting to clean up X side and Stewart Creek before we can proceed with Grand Park. So, we finally got that under control. Wade Park, of course, I like to say, no incentives were harmed in the failure of Wade Park. That was Stan Thomas's thing. And to JP's point, we probably should have checked his financials a little bit more thoroughly before going forward as we did with that project.
Appreciate that.
And sticking to the format, JP, you now have 30 seconds to add to the topic, if you would like.
Well, I think the important thing to remember is that Ian and I, again, the, first and foremost, John Keating or myself, we're still residents at the end of the day. And so, the decisions we make as a city council obviously have long-reaching implications. And you can always say that we could have done things better another way, but it's important that we take time, and that's where I feel like my attention to detail and communication may come in handy in future decisions down the road.
Okay, thank you. So, city council each year develops a top 10 priorities list, and they're in no particular order. I'm curious, what, John Keating, is your personal number-one priority from that list? And what would you like to do to move it forward this year?
Ah, good question. There's some good ones on there, and you know, I should preface it by saying, because a low tax rate and public safety and roads and infrastructure aren't necessarily on there, those are always first and foremost in our minds. And we were just recently recognized as being the second safest city in America, which makes us the safest city in Texas. So, having said that, you know, on there is World Cup 2026, and that's a long ways out, but that reflects our long-term vision that we have here in the city and understanding the time and commitment it takes to bring that to the region. Over the years, we've learned, being a regional partner is beneficial to Frisco. Obviously, we want to protect our interests and push Frisco first, but partnering with these, with the other cities, with our partners like the Hunt family, NFC Dallas, bringing something like that here to the area, the whole region benefits. So, I think that's something, it kind of reflects to our long-term vision. It kind of, it shows our commitment to Sports City USA and the work we're doing looking forward.
Thank you. JP, same question to you. Of the top 10 priority lists for 2021 that the council has identified, which would you personally make your number-one priority? What would you do to push it forward? And since you're not currently on the council, is there one that should be on there but isn't?
Well, I think in part, in addressing it, so I'll go with traffic and the issues that resolve around that and mobility. I would expand it to mobility throughout the city of Frisco. For me, we're very grateful that we do have a very prosperous city, but I know that there are a lot of people and who struggle with the commute, who've spoken to me, and that's not the only issue they deal with. But on a small scale, I certainly want to address, at a small scale, more bike paths, get those expedited. I know there's proposed trails, but I certainly want to expedite the construction of those to help connectivity. I think it'd be a real asset for both well-being and health for a lot of those people who live within five miles of the Dallas-North Tollway 121 corridor. I've also talked about mass transit. I'm willing to have that conversation to try and move people to and from their destination better, going to Dallas, and also the possibility of exploring a regional airport that could be an asset to both UNT Frisco, corporate clients, and also the region.
Okay, so there's a lot in that response. I am going to follow up. When you talk about specifically mass transit and airport, what are some specifics about how you would make that happen?
Well, obviously, with mass transit, going back to the early 90s, the city, obviously, and its voters, had the option to go with mass transit or the EDC, and they chose to go with the EDC, which I think at the time was of great benefit and is now. We're seeing the fruit of that in the early 90s. But now, moving forward, if we look at it, the first thing that we need to address is, it has to be more efficient than DART. So, whatever it is, we have to say in our minds, how do we make this more efficient where somebody can sit on a train, go to downtown Dallas, and be more comfortable there than in their car on the Dallas-North Tollway?
Okay. And Mr. Keating, you get an additional 30 seconds on the topic as well.
Well, look, PlayNoe chose DART. They spent $1 billion on it, and nobody writes it. So, the notion that we would turn this city around after building the city that we have, that 70% built out, 95% zoned, and then suddenly bring in public transportation, where would it go? It makes, I'm sorry, it makes no sense, and I would not support that.
Thank you both.
Thank you both for your responses. We're going to kind of shift gears a little bit and look towards Austin. It's probably our favorite A-word around here. When I say favorite, I think I mean least favorite. I digress again. It's been a day. So, it has. There's been a lot going on in Austin, actually. So, today, the Senate took up and passed Senate Bill 10, which is the ban on taxpayer-funded lobbying. And it's something that the Frisco Chamber and the city have both been vocal advocates against that bill. So, JP, we're going to start with you, I believe, if I have my order correct. What's your opinion on this? What is your stance on taxpayer-funded lobbying?
Well, it's, it has to be done in a prudent and judicious manner, but if we look at it, it represents, if you look at what the city has funded over the past year as far as lobbying, it's less than 1% of the general fund budget. And what are we getting for that? It obviously is incredibly important in Austin, especially in such a large state as ours, to make our case known, especially when we're one of the fastest-growing and largest and honestly, one of the best cities in the state of Texas. So, I very much understand the reservation of people and residents as far as taxpayer lobbying themselves, but if you look at the converse of that, of trying to, if we were to say, we can't do that anymore, it could be potentially five times more as expensive to get anything lobbied or get any movement on local legislation that could benefit cities, towns, and the employees who work for those cities.
Thank you. Same question to you, Mr. Keating?
Excellent answer, JP. That was very well done, and pretty much agree 100%. You know, we talk a lot about local control. That's another legislative item. And there are times when we want the state to legislate at the state level, so we've got a level playing field, and people understand, city to city, that the rules are the same. Here in Frisco, we've done a great job with our lobbyists. They've helped us close X side. They're helping us get battery tax money back for the, to help with the cleanup. They helped us bury the power lines, along with Collin County Association of Realtors. Shameless plug, they've endorsed my campaign. Very proud of that. So, the work we've done with our lobbyists, and I certainly understand the concern when elected officials use those taxpayer dollars for lobbying against the taxpayer. So, I certainly understand those concerns, but we've, you know, done well with that. We've been good stewards of taxpayer dollars. We don't work against our own citizens, and we've contracted to leverage that help down in Austin. And if you've been down there, like you say, those hallways are crowded, those sessions are long, and we're still a small town. We need all the help we can get.
Thank you both. Okay, Mr. Keating, next question. Post-pandemic, as things bounce back, what do you think the city can do and should do to support small businesses that are recovering?
You know, we've done, I think, a fantastic job of not over-regulating and not burdening our citizens and our small business with any additional regulation during the COVID crisis. We obviously implemented the state and county mandates. We did that, I think, very well. We were, did a great job with testing. We've done a great job with vaccinations. I think we've got 46,000 citizens vaccinated. So, as we open back up, you know, we asked citizens for a little bit of patience when we shut things down, and so, again, we're asking for a little bit of patience as we open things back up, because we want to do it safely, we want to do it successfully. We don't want to take one step forward and then have to go two steps backward. So, for example, we've got the NCAA Division One football game coming up, and NCAA has decided we'll sell 25% of the tickets rather than fully open. So, we'll use that opportunity to demonstrate that we are a city that is opening. We can do it safely, we can do it smart, and we can have fun at the same time.
Thank you. And JP, same question to you. Post-pandemic, as things start to bounce back, what do you think the city can do and should do to support small businesses?
Well, I'll credit John and the city of Frisco in the sense that they haven't over-regulated. I think one of the key things that I want to make sure is, you know, I have my mask right here with us, and that's a precautionary measure. And as a business, we should support their personal decision to enforce those rules, but at the same time, we should give Frisco residents the freedom. Governor Abbott said he has great faith in Texans' ability to master the steps to avoid COVID, and I believe him, and I have faith in the residents of Frisco as too. Wherever I go, they've made the choice as a precautionary measure to wear the mask in most cases, but that is purely a personal decision. I think additionally, with Congress passing the additional, it's not necessarily the Payroll Protection Act, but a lot of funding that goes within that, they've, the city did an excellent job distributing that to small businesses, but a lot of restaurants need to realize that in this latest iteration of the bill, there's funding available for them as well, for restaurants who've struggled in this pandemic.
Thank you.
My turn?
It is.
It's my turn. All right. So, you touched on it a little bit earlier, so we're going to dive back into kind of the economic development kind of conversation. The city's used a variety of tools throughout the years to attract the various businesses and corporations that we see here in Frisco. JP, what is your stance on the different incentives and tools that the city has used? And would you continue to use those practices?
Yes, I would, and it's purely based on the fact that people need to realize, first off, that the only funding that the EDC gets is through that half-cent sales tax. Any money that comes from that half-cent sales tax is what is funded. And there's a number of things that can be done to help businesses. Remember, and the EDC's goal is not only to bring in new businesses, but to also support and sustain the existing ones and help them grow. There is a very competitive market in, and I've had discussions before with people about, well, is that really fair to use taxpayer dollars? And businesses now are looking to the city, not only for taxpayer dollars, but quality of life. So, we don't always have to look at it in a situation where, okay, is this business getting how much per head count? We need to look at it as the company coming in and saying, what is the overall quality of life that I'm getting within the city of Frisco?
Thank you. And Mr. Keating, same question. We've used a variety of economic development tools. Which ones are you in favor of? Which ones, would you continue using those tools?
I'm certainly a big fan of EDC, EDC, Economic Development, Community Development. We've been very successful with that. Voters approved that over public transportation back in 1996. We did a 25-year look back, and the rate of return on that is like 25% to 30% if you measured it out like you were investing in a business opportunity. So, we have taken those, that sales tax revenue, not ad valorem taxes, and have leveraged them quite well for the opportunities here in Frisco. We, bit of trickle-down economics, if you will, where those big companies come in, provide opportunities here, and then some of the ancillary businesses that either support them, or would also be a good fit in the company, in the city, follow them along as well. So, you have that double effect, and then, of course, they become consumers and homebuyers and enjoy a school district and, obviously, the services that the city provides. So, it's been a wonderful mechanism and fully supported.
One of the biggest things that those companies look for when they're looking to come to Frisco is workforce. And a lot of the workforce questions evolve around housing and making sure there is a place for that workforce here. What do you think needs to be done to make sure that we are able to support the workforce that those businesses need in order to come to Frisco? Mr. Keating?
Well, I totally support the free market, and I applaud anyone who made that investment in Frisco years ago and have seen their property values rise, and this might be the time that they want to sell. And we're seeing houses get bid up and get snatched up, and it's kind of, it's a crazy market. So, the supply and demand, clearly, the demand outweighs the supply. I think we have a bit of a perfect storm here with COVID. We've seen, all the materials have become very scarce. We do have a new opportunity where we're master-planning 2,500 acres of the Fields Estate. That will have every housing option that I like to call in the housing bell curve, from that entry-level home all the way to that, to the bigger houses, and then back down again as you retire and want to downsize. We'll have that full portfolio available. Right now, it's just going to take a little while to come through this market. We've had buyer's market, seller's market. Right now, we're in a seller's market, and it's hot.
JP, same question to you.
I think this is, excuse me, without question, the most challenging issue to deal with, because I'm very hesitant of any type of government support to incentivize housing, but at the same time, I also think it's a responsibility as development services to look at that option and encourage that as we can, but without encouraging the financial incentive that comes with it. For UNT Frisco, there's going to be a lot of students who are going to be the first graduates, you know, in their family. And for them to get a job here in Frisco, that's ultimately extremely key important. So, I would encourage and would ask any developer or homebuyer, that they, or home developer, to obviously look at the future of what Frisco is going to look like. I definitely understand what John is saying about the perfect storm, and it is a challenge right now. It's something that needs to be addressed, but right now may not be the perfect time, especially with lumber at a multi-year high. especially with lumber at a multi-year high, with just dozens of homes on the market. You run into a multiple bidder situation that makes it very challenging, very challenging, but has to be addressed.
Thank you both. Chris?
Reading through my question options, sorry. So we'll wait on that one. So we'll go to this question. Frisco has pretty high standards when it comes to what we expect here in the city, whether it's building standards, there's little asterisks on that due to last legislative session, or green space standards or anything like that. Do you think that's something that is a good thing for business here in Frisco?
Yeah, I do think it sets not only a representation of what we expect out of the businesses who are here and come here, but also of our residents. We certainly want to set the example of why we're different, why we have that standard that comes with the City of Frisco. We certainly want to make it easy to do business in the City of Frisco, but there certainly is, if we can set an example, I think that's one of the most key components of why people would want to come to Frisco. I have to compliment the FISD for the example that they set and the number of variety of options that kids can go to school for. I mean, we're talking even junior high and high school education. So yeah, I am proud of that, and it comes, most importantly, from the customer service of the city employees, the city administrators, and those on council.
Thank you. Mr. Keating, same question?
The building standards are absolutely key, very critical to helping us build the kind of city that we want. It's prevented just the kind of development that perhaps we aren't looking for. We try to come to the higher end, if you will. Our sandbox isn't that big. It's 380 to the north, 121, Custer, 423. So everyone gets excited about trying to fill it with everything, and to make a sustainable city, you have to have a quality city. You've got to build equality. And so the building standards have helped us quite a bit. Losing that, we have to find some other options. Applaud Mayor Cheney and the council. We've kind of created three flaming hoops, if you will, with going from 7% to 10% green space, 55 units per acre as a limit on apartments, and then also phasing on mixed-use, multi-use developments.
Okay, great. Well, I wish we could stay here all night.
Yeah, I just realized what time it was, and it's like, oh, we should start wrapping this one up. So you want to go ahead and we'll kind of wrap it on up. The last portion of this will be, you'll get to ask your opponent a question, if you wish. So with that, we'll start with Mr. Keating, if you want to ask JP a question. I'm sorry, I'm not saying your last name. I just, I'm going to butcher that.
Scatty.
Now's your opportunity to ask him a question.
Well, Frisco had a small municipal airport. It was here when we moved here. It's gone now. I'm glad it's gone. I don't want to see one come back. You've mentioned it several times. I'm kind of curious as to why you would want to do that, and where would it go?
Well, you know, that's an excellent question. Frisco did have a jet port that was closed by the city. One of my major benefits behind that is not only potentially starting new programs at UNT Frisco, so it'd be located on the north side potentially. And you're right, John, it may be a challenge, it may not ever come to fruition, but I certainly am willing to explore that option. I am a firm believer, and maybe it's just my background in aviation and the ability and the power and the economic engine that an airport can have, especially considering all the corporate clients we have in the City of Frisco who actually have to either compete for space at Addison Airport or out in McKinney and then have to make that long drive. Plus, we have Sports City USA that could be an asset to the teams there as well, and also FC Dallas and bringing in friendlies as well. But I think it also is for the education benefit that UNT Frisco could have. It may not ever come to fruition, but I believe it's certainly something worth exploring.
And now you get to ask Mr. Keating a question.
Oh, what can we ask him? I have often wondered that you ran for state house and you only lost by less than 100 votes. I would ask you, is that something you would ever consider doing again? And would there be anything you would have done differently in that race?
Oh, well, thank you. That, you know, I'm very proud of the race we ran in 2016. Came out of the primary 1,000 votes ahead. I had two opponents from Rockwall, Mr. Lipton and Mr. Holland. And of course, as we expected, they banded together. They really wanted a Rockwall representative. I certainly understand that. Justin Holland won that race, and I applaud the work he's done down in Austin. He's down there right now working for us alongside Jared Patterson. We've got, if anyone knows that story, House District 33 on one side and House District 106 on the other, originally held by my good friend Pat Fallon and my good friend Scott Turner. Both have moved on and have done incredible things. And, you know, I, again, am very proud of that campaign. I don't think I would run for state representative again to answer that portion of your question. I'm right here at home in Frisco and love the work that we're doing here in the city and would like to continue doing that.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, now you each get two minutes for your closing, and Mr. Keating, you will get to go first.
Well, thank you. I'm John Keating. I'm running for Frisco City Council, Place One. I've been your city councilman for 10 years now, which I know that sounds a bit unusual, but I did take a break to run for state rep in 2016, and I'm back again, serving my country by serving my community. I've been part of some of the major developments here in Frisco. Very excited about the opportunity to close X side and to get Grand Park cleaned up and get that project going. Very excited about public safety and opening three new fire stations. Working with the NCAA on the Division One game, as we talked about earlier, turning that into a true bowl experience, not just for the teams, but for our citizens as well. That brought us another bowl game. That's a huge economic impact for all of our businesses here in Frisco. It's been fantastic. We've built on that, certainly looking forward. One of our top 10 is to build a, to bring a performing arts center here. That's something that has been on the list and has now made it to the top 10, and I applaud that effort and look forward to working with Tammy Minerschagen and her, and her team with Frisco Arts. They've done an incredible job of backfilling and meeting the demand of the community with public art. I'm very proud of our veteran community and the work that we've done. We've got a really great project going with refreshing the Veterans Memorial at Commons Park. Would invite everyone to come out on May 31st on Veterans Day, as we have our great unveiling out there, and you'll see the plaques have been refreshed, new statue will be out there for everyone to enjoy. It'll be a great event, whether you're a veteran or not, you're invited. And also invite you to visit my website, keatingforfrisco.com, and look forward to having your vote and continuing to serve you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And now two minutes for you.
Crystal, Chris, and Tony and everybody behind the curtain there, we appreciate you taking the time to put this on. I appreciate John coming as well tonight, so we can have a good discussion. I would tell you, one of the things at the very beginning of this campaign is I knew that it would be a good campaign because I have a lot of respect for John and myself, and so I knew it would be a great opportunity to discuss ideas and to focus on that. And so I am JP Scatty. I am a bit of an outsider. I feel like I'm a fresh voice for Frisco for the decade that John has served the community, and will certainly appreciate his contributions. I believe it's time for a change. I would hope that when you're considering who to vote for, that you ask these questions, where did we come from as a city? Where are we now as a city? And where are we going? John has certainly laid, was part of the groundwork of that city, and many leaders before that, Mayor Warren and beyond, who have helped, laid the foundation for the City of Frisco. But my focus is where are we going? And that's why I'm so passionate about some of these issues I've mentioned tonight, including improving mobility through just basic things like bypass and improving mobility and also quality of life, preserving green space. And we're almost built out, so the next several years are going to be critical to help making sure that the city is sustainable. And where are we going as far as transportation? It has to be discussed. You know, Salina just had an article the other day, which is 20 minutes north of us, that's built out to 160,000, and then Prosper. And the only solution we have right now is Dallas North Tollway, which we have to pay for, or side roads that can get congested. So I hope that you would consider those options of where are we going as a city? Go to JP for Frisco. And when the election comes on May 1st, or early voting that begins next week, I hope you would cast a ballot for me, JP Frisco, or JP Scatty for Frisco.
JP Frisco, that's a new name.
Yes. Is that easier for you, Chris?
I appreciate, I appreciate you both joining us this evening. I'm going to repeat what I said last night. Thank you for putting your name out there as a candidate, and thank you for serving and wishing to continue to serve. We wish you both the best in this race. We really appreciate you joining us this evening. We're going to go ahead and transition, unless you have anything else to add.
Yeah, and so just hang tight with us. If you're watching at home, we will switch out the candidates and be right back.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Good job, guys.
Thanks. I'm sorry to reach for that.[1215.33]
Welcome back, I think. Yes, we're back.
Welcome. Well, then, welcome.
Yep, well, we're here, we're doing it again. I think this is the last time we do it for this cycle.
Maybe, but we shouldn't, we shouldn't say for sure.
Maybe.
So Place 3, City Council, is what we have right now. We want to go over the format again. So for this group of candidates, it will be the same as the last. You will each have a minute to introduce yourself. And Tony is our timekeeper. He will give you the signal when you are at 30 seconds or 15? 15 seconds. And then you will have questions from us. You will have a minute to respond to those questions. Same thing with the timekeeping. Now, in your answers, we would like as much substance and specifics as possible. And if we don't quite get that substance, we may ask a follow-up question. But it's better if you can put it in on the front end. Because if we ask a follow-up question, you will get 30 seconds to clarify. But all your opponents will get 30 seconds more on the topic as well. So we will get through more topics the more substantive you are on the first round. And then, once we get to the end, everybody will get the opportunity to ask one question of an opponent of your choice. So be thinking about that as well, if there's anything that we didn't touch on that you would like to bring up. And then, at the very end, you will each get two minutes for closing. Does that sound good? All right.
Awesome. Well, I think we got through the hard part.
Yeah.
How to get to the fun part. Awesome. Well, we're going to go ahead and start with our introductions. We're going to work from my left to right. So we're going to start with Si and then work our way across the room. And then with questions, we'll work from this way back this way. Make sure you grab your microphones and speak directly into the microphones whenever it is your turn. And with that, Mr. Krishna, you have one moment, one minute.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Si Krishna. I'm a registered nurse, and I've been in Frisco for a little, close to like, close to four years. And I've been in healthcare more than a decade. And I did run in the last election, and you all, Frisco residents, you all blessed me with 14,500 votes. I was very happy. So I didn't stop my journey there. I am running again for Place 3 here today. And early voting starts on Monday. So I really appreciate, everybody take a minute and know, I mean, you already know about me, and I'm always available for you. And you can always count on me in Frisco. Being a nurse, and I'm coming from a background of a family who built like 100 better hospitals in India before independence. And passion of, I do call serving community is not a job, it's a calling passion. So I do have a master's in business administration, and nurses care very well the community. Thank you very much.
I forgot to mention the cowbell. So that is Tony's signal if you have run out of time. Thank you, Mr. Krishna.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Jennifer White. I am running for Frisco City Council, Place 3. I am not a politician, I am very much a political outsider. By my career, I'm a veterinarian, and I do believe that will bring a lot to City Council. Being a veterinarian has absolutely taught me to be a great problem solver. And I just have a lot of empathy for my patients. I'm very blessed to have been in this race. I have learned a lot, and I do believe I'm the best candidate for this position. I am currently serving as my precinct chair for Precinct 1032, and I was a state delegate for the Republican Party. I'm also very, very honored to have several key conservative endorsements, including Collin County GOP, Collin County Conservative Republicans, Sheriff Tracy Murfree, Denton County Commissioner Ryan Williams, and also 80% of the Republican precinct chair. I promise I will stand up for the city of Frisco and fight for things like lower taxes, reducing density, and absolutely prioritizing public safety.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Karen Cunningham, and I am also running for City Council, Place 3. My husband Craig and I moved to Frisco 17 years ago, and our children, Avery and Kyle, were born and raised here in Frisco. Avery is a freshman at Lone Star High School, and Kyle is a 7th grader at Trent Middle School in Frisco ISD. I'm a small business owner. I have started, I started my own HR consulting firm, Human Resources, about eight years ago, and spent about 20 years in corporate America before that. I'm a proud Frisco Chamber member. I've been a member for over a decade. I'm also a past chair of the Frisco Chamber of Commerce and served on the Board of Directors for the Frisco Chamber for six years. I am committed to a fiscally responsible government, steadfast focus on public safety, smart community development, and an engaged and inclusive community. I look forward to participating in this forum tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Angelia Pelham, and I am also running for City Council, Place 3. Thank you to the chamber for allowing us to come before the voters to give us, to give the voters a perspective of who all the candidates are. My husband, my daughter, and I moved to Frisco about 17 years ago. We are the products of a corporate relocation with the Frito-Lay Company. Since then, we've been serving in our community. We launched a church downtown Frisco, renovating the Old Abbey Restaurant about 13 years ago. I also launched an 11-year Dr. Martin Luther King Gala and Oration Competition that has awarded almost $60,000 in scholarships to 50-plus Frisco ISD students. I sit on the Board of Hope Store New Beginnings and a number of other humanitarian organizations. But that's not why I'm running. I think that Frisco needs a business leader with my background. I've spent 30 years in corporate at companies such as Walt Disney World, PepsiCo, Frito-Lay, and Cinemark, in jobs ranging from director all the way to executive vice president. I hope that you will be able to see the difference that I bring to Frisco. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for the introductions. To get started, we'll do a quick lightning round. Easy question. How many city council meetings have you attended in person to date? Wait, are we going right to left now?
Yeah, we'll start with Angelia and work our way back this way.
Sorry.
In person, I would say probably about 50 to 60%.
Okay.
I've been attending city council meetings since 2008, on and off, and probably dozens, I can't even count how many.
Thank you.
I've attended probably about 10 to 12, and then I have watched most of the others online.
I attended like, maybe like five or six, but I attended over the phone, few of them.
Okay. Thank you all. So I'm going to kind of dive into a question that I think is kind of, an important question when it comes to local races and city council elections. We'll start with Mr. Krishna here. What is your opinion on partisanship in local races? Should that come into the city council race?
Can you repeat the question?
So partisanship, Republican, Democrat party politics, should that enter local city council elections?
No, it should be nonpartisan in the city because it comes to whole Frisco. Whoever elects, whoever get elected in the city should consider the whole Frisco. So there should be nonpartisan in the city. That's my answer.
Dr. White?
I absolutely do believe that voters want to understand what our character is and what our, and just how we feel. So I do believe that these are partisan races. It's important for me to, I mean, I'm a conservative Christian, and that's my background, and that absolutely will affect how I vote on Frisco City Council. And I want people to know that. And so, yes, I do think they should be partisan.
So it's a nonpartisan position. It's a nonpartisan role. It is, you know, each one of us has a voter background, each one of us has, you know, partisan beliefs in our, you know, personally. But at the end of the day, this role is about representing all of Frisco. And it's ensuring that all of Frisco feels comfortable coming to every member of City Council and feeling like they have representation, and they have people that will listen to their concerns and act upon their concerns and not let those concerns be slighted by a partisan view.
Here's of late, partisanship has divided our country, and in some cases, even our city. So absolutely not. I think that it should not be a part of this race. I think that every person who sits on City Council should represent every resident, all 206,000 residents. And I think that, yes, we bring our values and we bring our beliefs to the table, but decisions that we should make as a council member should be based solely on what's right for Frisco, not what's right for the Republicans, not what's right for the Democrats, not what's right for the liberals. It's what's right for Frisco. So I absolutely believe that it should not be a part of the decision-making process.
Thank you.
Thank you. So City Council every year develops a list of top 10 priorities, but doesn't necessarily rank them as number one and what order they should be tackled. So for you personally, what would your number one priority be from the list of top 10? Or is there one that you would add?
Yeah, my first priority would be tourism. We have lost significant dollars in our economy due to COVID. And pre-COVID, we were about $1.2 billion in our economy that was generated from tourism, and we had over 6 million visitors to our city. We are about 55% of that today. And when you put that type of money into the economy, not only are small businesses able to benefit, but we, as a city, benefit because of the sales tax that plays a huge part in our general fund budget. So I would absolutely say getting people back to Frisco and generating those tourism dollars will be absolutely important.
Thank you.
You know, there's a reason why there's a top 10. And it could be a top 20, a top 30. City Council can't focus on just one thing. And so I recognize that that's important. I think working on all elements of the city and making sure that we are focusing in on all of the ways in which we need to invest in our city, improve our city, focus on infrastructure. You know, if I had to pick one that I think is something that I think our residents would like to see happen, you know, we've been talking about Grand Park for over 10 years. And it's obviously something that we want to see, because what we keep seeing is building of new buildings. You know, it's all, there's all the construction, and we want to see more open spaces. And I think that's important to our community. But I also recognize there's a lot of things that need to happen for Grand Park to take place. And that includes the cleanup of the X-site property and the cleanup of Stewart Creek as well, to ensure that Grand Park can eventually happen.
Of the current priorities, I do believe that Grand Park is probably one of the number one priorities. I do agree that'll be a great place for people to take their children and to just enjoy family time. Family time, family values are very important to me. Now, I absolutely do think there are a couple of things missing from the list. I've talked to thousands and thousands of voters, and I find it a little surprising that things like what's important to residents are not on there. Things like lower taxes, reducing density, prioritizing our public safety. I would like to see us focus on things that are actually important to Frisco city residents.
For me, as a resident, I think there are a couple priorities, just not just one top priority. We had, the things, priorities goes hands on hands, like, you know, one is number, like, a public safety is most important, because a lot of people are moving into the city now. So we need a, a public safety means like increase our police officers, and they should have everything, whatever they need to protect their families and kids, number one. Number two, like, I mean, with the same thing as with the Grand Park, we need to have a good sanitation. I mean, like, you know, we have to collaborate with EPA and CDC as well, to make sure that residents doesn't pick up any lead contamination through their skin. And kids can develop mental illness, adults can develop chronic conditions, and so on. So we want to make sure that we prioritize things, and we take responsibility, accountability when we are doing that things. Because community health is most important than anything. We can live with the $10, but we cannot live without a health. That's my.
So thank you for identifying your personal priorities. Now, I'd like to go in reverse and talk about what your specific plans would be that you'd bring to the table if elected on day one. So for public safety, Mr. Krishna, what would you?
Right now, we have like, you know, every 1,000 residents, we have one police officer. I want to bring that to every 500, 500 residents, we need to have one police officer, and we cannot compromise with the security, public safety and security. Secondly, we need to work on the traffic issue. Right now, with the COVID, people are working from home. From July, from the August, once the school starts and the, once the companies calls back all the employees, they have to work, and the cars will be jammed on the road. And that is the first top priority, like, you know, infrastructure, we need to work on that, to divide the traffic or deviation the traffic and make sure that people are happy here.
So I'm going to interrupt before we move along. I do want to follow up with, how would you pay for doubling our police force? What is your plan for that?
So if we have money for $61 million to spend for a library, why can't we think about our police department? We need to generate the revenue. So we need more companies to come. So infrastructure, where everybody looks at, the company comes, like, you know, they say, okay, is there a very good roads here? Like, you know, that does remain important. We are planning. So that, that's what we have to focus on, to bring more companies. And at the same time, when the revenue generates, we need to work on these things. It all goes hands on hand.
And now, each of you will get 30 seconds to respond to Mr. Krishna's response, if you choose. Dr. White?
I think that, you know, density is probably the number one issue in Frisco right now. Frisco does lead the nation by, with the number of apartments that have been added in the last five years. I do think public safety is important, but I also think that as we add density, we are just creating more problems for our public safety, which I do support that.
Ms. Cunningham?
So first of all, we have 45-plus percent of our budget allocated to public safety already. It's a big budget, but, and that's also a big percentage, but there's a lot of things to cover within our city budget. And so while I think it is, everyone would love to have more police officers, more firefighters, but I think there's got to be a balance between cost incurred and, and the level of staffing levels that are appropriate for our community. And, you know, if we had unlimited resources, it's a different story. But we're just not in that environment, and I don't want our taxes to increase to pay for something that we, that we just can't afford.
Okay. Ms. Pelham?
Yeah, public safety absolutely is important, especially as we grow as a city. And, you know, I think that Mr. Krishna's point about increasing headcount is certainly something to take note of. But as already pointed out, about 48% of our budget actually goes to fire and police. And we added six headcount just in this past year alone, which was about an 8% increase in our budget. So I think we have to be very smart in thinking through how we increase headcount without increasing taxes, because you can only do so much with the revenue that you've been given as a city.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. White, now back to your priority. You mentioned both Grand Park and lowering taxes. What would be your specific plan that you would bring to the table to lower taxes?
So I absolutely think that we can lower taxes. Our current tax rate for property taxes is .4466. And I do think, I, my plan for that, I think we should adopt the no-new-revenue rate. What that basically says is that we can, Frisco City Council has the right to just set that rate so that we can basically keep the taxes the same year after year. It was done in Plano, and it's been very successfully done in Plano after they elected two conservative council members. It was said that they would, that they wouldn't be able to pay their bills, but I think Plano is doing great. It's a vibrant city, and I absolutely do think that if we adopt the no-new-revenue rate, I think that that's what we should do for Frisco City Council.
Okay. And Ms. Cunningham, you mentioned Grand Park. What are your specific plans for pushing Grand Park forward?
Well, the X-site cleanup is really the obstacle in front of us. X-site, for those that don't know, was a battery plant that was opened here in Frisco in 1968. It was way before anyone ever dreamed that Frisco would be who we are today. But years later, it was in the middle of a city, and through negotiations of the city, it was shut down. Unfortunately, that part of the process was actually requiring them to clean up the battery chips in the area and doing some remediation of that property, including Stewart Creek. And through, you know, legal tactics, that was able to be delayed. And ultimately now has resulted in the city of Frisco, through the Community Development Corporation that I sit on, acquiring the property so that we could actually take over that property through the bankruptcy courts and complete the cleanup of that for, you know, for the benefit of our residents and our community, and more so for the contamination that it has around it. But it also prevents us from being able to move forward with the Grand Park project.
Okay. And Ms. Pelham, you mentioned tourism as your priority. What would you do to, specifically, what would you do to bring tourism back and support that?
Yeah, well, first of all, I'm excited that the mask mandate has been lifted, because I think that's going to certainly help us. I'm also excited that we were identified as a vaccination hub, and we vaccinated almost 45,000 people. So we're on our way to recovery when it comes to tourism. But I do think that there are some other things that hopefully we can get in place today. There is a special events budget that we're trying to get some funds for, for Visit Frisco. Hopefully, that will help us with generating funds to get people back into Frisco. And then I also have a specific proposal to really generate tourism dollars, not only for outside tourists, but also residents, by connecting all of our specific places in Frisco through a trolley or an open-air bus, or some form of creative transportation to connect to Downtown Rail District, the Frisco Square, the STAR PGA. It could be another revenue generation for us that could attract tourists and get our residents out and seeing the city as well.
Thank you.
Taking notes. Thank you. Well, I appreciate all of y'all's responses. We're going to kind of shift a little bit of our focus down towards Austin. So there's a legislative session going on. It's a, it's a great time to be in government affairs, so we have.
Chris has been busy.
Been a little busy today. So today, the Senate took up and passed Senate Bill 10. Senate Bill 10 is the ban on taxpayer-funded lobbying. The Frisco Chamber of Commerce has been vocal advocates against that bill being passed. The city has also said that they are not in favor of that bill being passed. Angelia, we're going to start with you and work our way across. What is your position on that bill and that practice?
Yeah, so Senate Bill 10, I think, I understand the spirit behind it, because when it was created, it was designed to encourage cities to communicate directly with the legislature. But I think the reality is, we only have so much headcount in the city, and there are over 7,000 bills that are introduced with each session, and there's no way that the headcount that we have in the city today could keep track of all of these bills and to surface the ones that are most critical to the city. So I think having the extension of lobbyists to help us identify those bills are absolutely critical. If you think about the Texas Municipal League, they've helped us significantly with the X-site cleanup and other issues that we've taken to the legislature. So I absolutely think that we need that help, we need the support, but we don't want to abuse it, and we still want to keep direct dialogue with our, with our state officials.
So I'm very disappointed. SB 10 is bad. It puts private interest groups at a competitive advantage against municipalities. It puts it specifically in favor of people who are paying lots of money to have their interests heard and expecting cities and other municipalities to be able to stand up and do the same thing. I'll give an example. Our city council is a volunteer role. These are not paid positions. These are not full-time staff positions. Everyone that's running for office has a job that we have outside of this for Place 3. So to expect individuals to be able to represent the city, even from a city council perspective, at the same level as someone who would be advocating on our behalf and our interests, puts us at a disadvantage at being able to be represented at the same level as special interest groups.
Thank you.
I'm against taxpayer lobbyist, because I don't believe that taxes should be used for potentially bills or things that Frisco residents just are, are not in favor of. So I'm not in favor of taxpayer lobbyist.
I'm the same thing. I'm against using the tax money for lobbying. We can, there are a lot of other thing priorities in the city that we can use that money effectively prioritizing things. So I'm against that.
Thank you all for your responses.
Yes, so you talked about having jobs outside of city councils, so this sort of speaks to that. As the city recovers post-pandemic, what do you think the city can do and should do to support small businesses as they recover? Mr. Krishna?
I don't have a job. On the reality basis, serving community is my job, and I'm always available, 21st of January, as I said earlier. So we, when it comes to city council, if I get elected, I'm going to conduct a lot of workshops, educating people, the families, to run a small business, so they can have a wonderful life. They don't have to be like, you know, nine-to-five working for somebody else, so they can be boss for their company or their business. So that's my biggest challenge, and I'm going to be in the community. I'm going to bring a lot of education, educational, like an ADC, whatever that ADC is. I'm going to make it strong and take it to the neighborhood, educate them, you know. Sometimes it takes a little time, but we can definitely nail that down, educate our residents to step up for doing business. That's my goal. I'm going to do that.
Okay. Dr. White, what do you think the city can and should do to help small businesses as they recover?
First off, let me say that I pray every day for those who are affected with COVID. I am so glad that we have put in some policies, and I'm so glad that businesses are being open now. I personally did, I do know some friends who just lost their businesses because of business closures. So I absolutely do believe that it's time to open up our businesses. We need to give them incentives, just to get everybody back on their feet. And so I do see that we're going to have a great recovery. Our city is strong, and I do believe that we're getting through this in a good way.
Ms. Cunningham?
So I do feel like there's so much we can do still to assist our small businesses, in particular with, with opening back up and getting the visitors and the traffic back to our area, that they've been missing for over a year now. The city, the chamber, you know, everyone's been rolling up their sleeves and doing a lot of work in this area, partnering with state and federal programs and figuring out ways that we can bring the awareness to the business community. Those are all critical components of this. They, when you're a small business owner, you're trying to do everything you can just to keep your doors open. You don't have the ability You don't have the ability or the time to go search for all the resources that are available to you. That's something where the chamber's been able to advocate, uh, very loud for the business community through this process, and I'm proud to have been part of that on the chamber board this past year.
Ms. Pellum?
I think the biggest thing the city can do for small businesses is get consumers back into Frisco. That is going to be absolutely critical for the businesses along our main street and all of these small businesses who need consumers to eat in their restaurants, buy their product. So the more that we can generate tourism to attract people to our city and to, and to just take part of what our, our small businesses have to offer, I think that's going to be job one, getting tourism back. Job two is continuing to support those small businesses by helping to reskill their labor, helping to provide support to resources, and giving insight to them on how to, uh, to really operate their business in this new normal. So those are the two things that I would recommend that we do. But we've got to get tourism back, because without tourism, our small businesses will continue to struggle.
So Ms. Pellum, um, at, well, everybody, at this time, I'm going to kind of ask individual questions of each of you, um, so it's not one question for all of you, just kind of in response to some of the comments you've made this evening. Um, so Ms. Pellum, we're going to start with you. In regards to tourism, what is it that you would do differently or expect out of Visit Frisco, um, that would be different than what they're already doing? We, um, as the chamber has worked throughout the pandemic, Visit Frisco's been a big part of that, um, and making sure that we bring business and tourism back, and they've got a great plan in place. Uh, what would you do differently from that plan?
Yeah, I, I think that, uh, Visit Frisco has done a phenomenal job. One of the things that I know that they've done is they've used a company called Buxton that I've used in my career to really kind of study, why do people come to Frisco and why do people leave Frisco? And I think that data is really compelling, because that helps us understand what it is that we need to have in our city in order for people to stay in Frisco and spend money and to draw people to our city. And I'll say, one of the things, which is absolutely one of the priorities of the city, is performing arts. That's very critical. One of the things that our Buxton data has told us is that people leave the city for entertainment. So we've got to have a performing arts center here so that we can draw people to our city, we can keep our people in our city, and spend money on performing arts. So I think that is certainly something that should be on our horizon to really kind of drive tourism in our city.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham, um, again, these are all kind of individual questions. So, um, you kind of stuck to, uh, XIDE. You've talked about XIDE quite a bit this evening. Um, what else is there specifically that you want to do differently if you were elected to be on city council?
You know, one of the things that I think is very important to recognize about city council is that we have a tremendous staff within the city. And, and one of our key jobs with city council is supporting that staff and making sure that we are providing the tools and resources and the funding in order to let them do their jobs. We have an amazing economic development corporation leader and staff. We're not the ones going out and meeting with these businesses. We may be invited, um, to a meeting here or there, but they are seasoned professionals in economic development. And so our job is to support, to fund, to make sure that we are providing the tools and resources for those individuals to be able to do their professional job, and honestly, to stay out of the way in many ways, to make sure that we don't get in the way of progress, uh, where there's, you know, where there's already progress being made.
Thank you. Um, Dr. White, you expressed interest in a no new revenue tax rate earlier. Um, it is my understanding that under SB 2 that was passed last session, no new revenue tax rate is the tax rate that cities would have to adopt, period, moving forward in the new tax years, um, due to the property tax changes in that bill. Can you speak to how you see, um, that affecting Frisco, if that's going to be the case anyways? And furthermore, uh, can you, you've also spoken to just tax rate in general and how you want to lower the tax rate, kind of ties that together. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. Uh, so taxes and tax relief are the number one priority that's on the mind of Frisco city residents. Um, I mean, currently, our tax burden is the third highest out of the 15 surrounding cities. Um, so I do believe there's plenty of room to lower taxes, and I think that's what people want. That's their number one concern. I mean, yes, we do need to have taxes, uh, but they need to be low enough. Sometimes people's, people's taxes are as high as their mortgage, and that is things that I hear every day talking to Frisco city residents. So yes, I do think the no new revenue tax is the way to go, um, and I think it'll be successful, and I think it's a great way just to, uh, to keep those taxes low in Frisco.
So I'm going to just kind of follow up on that one, just again, very specifically, you just talked to the no new, no new revenue tax rate. How low is low enough for you?
Uh, I think that it should be low enough where Frisco city taxes are basically the same from year to year. We'll still get a lot of new revenue in new businesses, uh, those aren't affected, uh, but the no new tax rate, uh, comes from the existing, from the existing properties. So I do think it can work in Frisco City Council.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Krishna, um, you've mentioned traffic being a big issue when people get back to work, roads are going to be clogged. What's your solution to that?
Absolutely, absolutely. Great question. So, like, I want to give you this example. Last year, I mean, February 28th, we lost two lives, I mean, three lives on 4/23, 28th. So what did we learn from it? Did we make any correction, or did we take it, uh, like, you know, uh, moving forward, like, you know, we had to come up with some solutions? No. March 38th, we lost again another two lives on the same spot, same spot, yeah. So what are we learning? What are we getting from this? So do you want to continue to lose the lives of our residents, or do you have to come up with some kind of idea, like innovation? We had to get this traffic issue, when it comes to the, like, you know, August, you know, all, everybody's going to be starting work and the kids are going to go to school, all these things happen, right? Okay, so if I get elected, I'm going to get, uh, I, I recommend, highly recommend, a, a team to research, analysis, and get their recommendations, and then we can sit, uh, take that recommendation, sit and decide how we can move forward to, I mean, deviate this all traffic and everything. So, so there's a big, big, uh, it's a big arena.
So the team of traffic engineers that we have that monitor our roads every day, would you add that, add to that?
No, we'll take them as consideration, but we, I want to have like a different outsiders, not the city one. We have a lot of experts too. We have to get some help from outside.
So you would hire outside experts for your traffic, but not for lobbying?
Exactly. No, not lobbying, not for lobbying, no.
Just wanted to make sure.
Everything for city, community, health.
Okay.
Safety.
Your turn, Krishna.
Okay. So you've had the chance to hear your opponents, um, tonight, and now it is your turn to ask questions. Um, you can choose which opponent you would like to ask one question to, and they will have one minute to respond. So we will go back to left, right. Mr. Krishna, you get to go first. Who would you like to ask a question?
I want to ask Ms. Angelia Pellum, uh, to, like, I, I wanted to know more about the tourism, what she wants to bring onto the table, like, on the, to the city, uh, in, in regards to tourism.
Yeah, so I would definitely.
You should grab your microphone.
I definitely would recommend that we start to see our city as a destination place. When you go to cities like New York and LA and all, London, you know, they have, um, the big red hop-on, hop-off bus, and they have each of the parts of the city really designated, designated as, uh, places that are really branded, and they connect them together through these, uh, transportation modes. I would definitely say that that is an opportunity for us. If we want to be a tourist destination, I think we should act like one, and we should brand our different destinations. We have great opportunities for people to come to our city. We've got the Railroad Museum, we've got the PGA, and the STAR. We have a lot of different destination places. How do we connect those together, have a revenue generating tool like a trolley or a bus, and give our tourists an opportunity to really see the city holistically? So that definitely is something that I would propose from tourism perspective.
All right, thank you. Dr. White, it's now your turn. Who would you like to ask a question?
Uh, my question, my question is for Angelia as well. So when we, I remember the day that I first met my opponents, and, uh, it was at the winter work session, uh, back in, uh, back in January. You know, we talked and, uh, we all kind of made the agreement that we were going to run a clean race with no personal attacks. It's recently come to my attention that you put out a pretty bad hit piece on me, uh, which none of that was true, um, if you ask any of my supporters. Um, and so, uh, I'd just like to know, uh, you know, what your feelings are about that, why did you go against your word? And then more importantly, you know, you dropped those into city mailboxes. Um, that's not, that, that's, that's actually illegal, and so I'd like to know how to respond to that.
Well, first of all, Dr. White, uh, to my knowledge, there were no flyers of any sort dropped into any city mailboxes, so, uh, I'm not sure where you're getting your information about that, but that's erroneous, that's not true. Any communication that has come from my team has been communication that has expressly, uh, been about candidates and what we consider to be truthful. We've not attacked anyone's character. We have specifically shared with the, the voters what we feel is the truth. Um, I do not feel that you're fit to govern. I do not feel that you're qualified to sit on city council, and that's what was shared in our flyer, and I will tell you that, uh, directly.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham? Who would you like to ask a question?
Well, I feel like Angelia has gotten all this attention, and unfortunately, I've got one more for you, so sorry about that. Um, so Angelia, we're both HR leaders. Um, you took the path to, to the C-suite in corporations, and I took the path of small business ownership and serving extensively within our community. I've heard you imply multiple times in forums that service and leadership in this community isn't valuable to the preparation of the role of city council. I'm curious why you believe that.
To go on record, I will correct that as well. Uh, you've never heard me say that it's not valuable. What I say about service is that it's about impact. It's not about checking boxes, it's not about sitting on boards, it's about the impact that you have on the lives of the residents that you touch. That is what I've said, and that's what I will stand by.
Okay, you can keep the microphone, because it is now your turn to ask a question.
Finally. Okay. I'd like to go back to Dr. White, because I've heard a lot of no's. I've heard a lot of no taxes, no apartments, uh, no performing arts, no sports, a lot of no's. And, and we all know that, you know, no is kind of the first thing that a baby learns, uh, when they learn to talk. So, uh, as a leader, I want to hear a little bit more, um, than the no. How do you anticipate lowering the taxes but not impacting public safety? Because public safety is about 48% of our expenditures as a city. And so when you lower revenues, you inevitably have to lower expenditures. So how are you going to do that without touching public, public safety?
First off, uh, I do not think that you, I did, I do think you've attacked my reputation. Um, I'm absolutely qualified to be on city council. Um, I think that what we need on city council is not more large business experience, we need small business experience. Small businesses are the ones that tend to, uh, know exactly where our money's coming from, and they know exactly where our money is going. So as a small business owner, that absolutely makes me qualified. Uh, you know, going back to taxes, um, our budget is $182 million right now. Uh, that is up 7.7% from last year. There is absolutely room to cut that budget. Like I said, Plano cut their budget with their no new tax rate, and they have not lost any city services. If they can do it in, if they can do it in Plano, we absolutely can do it here in Frisco.
Okay, thank you. And now we are to the two-minute closing. Remind me, are we going right to left this time?
We started there, so we'll, and we finished here, so we'll start here and work our way back, I think, right?
My memory is short. I appreciate that.
I think we're going to start with Angelia, and we'll work our way back across. It's been a long night. Thank you for staying with us on the broadcast. Um, Angelia, you have two minutes to do your close. Go ahead.
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you for hanging in there with us, Frisco. Hopefully, you've learned a lot about the candidates tonight. Um, first of all, as I shared earlier, um, I, I spent 30 years being vetted and tested in corporate, and you might ask, well, why does that matter? Being on city council, it's a leadership position. It's not a popularity position. That city council approves a $600 million budget on behalf of 206,000 residents. That city council approves a $183 million general fund budget. That city council approves capital budgets, that city council approves environmental budgets, that city council actually selects and hires the city manager, the municipal judge, and the city attorney. So if that's not a leadership position, I don't know what is. And the qualifications to sit on city council should be about who's capable as a leader. And I am a proven leader. If you want someone who has reviewed and approved multimillion-dollar budgets, who knows how to find tax dollars, then I'm your person. If you want someone who understands how to lead diverse teams and speak the language of all Frisco residents, then I'm your person. If you want someone who understands how to get through the clutter and pull people together and align on common ideals, then I'm your person. Thank you so much for tuning in today, and make sure you get out to vote in early voting next week. Angelia Pellum for Frisco City Council, place three. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
So I, I do want to stay on this track of, of leadership. Um, I have been serving and leading in this community for over 16 years. It's something I'm extremely proud of, but it's also something I've demonstrated. It's not something I've just put on my resume, it's action. And it started with one organization that I had the opportunity to serve in, and something that I learned along the way was, was the concept of servant leadership. And you've heard me use the word service a lot, but that's because the most important part of service leadership is service to others. I am extremely proud of the work I've done in this community. My qualifications include, for the last four years, I've actually been serving on city boards and commissions. I serve currently on the City of Frisco Community Development Corporation, where I serve as vice president. I served on the Charter Review Commission, and I was appointed by city council to be the chair of that commission. That was something they chose over every single other person on that committee, because they believed in my leadership. I am the past president of the Frisco Family Services Board of Directors. I served on that board for nine years. During my leadership on that, on that board, we actually initiated a capital campaign that's resulted now in the building of the, of the Client Services Center on Main Street next to the resale store. It's something I'm very proud of in my leadership journey. I currently serve on the Board of, of the Frisco Fast Pack Board of Directors. We, we provide meals to children whenever, whenever school's not in session, a mission that I'm very proud of supporting, both my leadership and my service of my time. I am the past chair of, of the Frisco Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, where I served six years, and I supported businesses through advocacy and innovation and ways that businesses would not be supported without the chamber being present. Um, I'm also a proud graduate of Leadership Frisco, class 19. I have studied within the city, I've learned what, what is required of this position, and I am ready from day one to step into this role and make a difference on behalf of our residents in this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. White?
Uh, thank you for the time tonight, and I think we've pointed out some, uh, pretty important differences between the candidates. Uh, I believe I'm the most qualified candidates, candidate in this race, because I do truly understand what Frisco city residents want. I've talked to thousands and thousands of residents, and I understand. Uh, I think, uh, people are frustrated. Uh, they think city council, uh, just they have no voice, nobody listens to them. I will be the voice of the people, um, I will understand what the people want. Um, I do not think it's our job on city council to educate people. I think it's our job on city council to listen to our residents, to understand, and to be their voice. So I will be the voice of the people, and I will stand up for my principles and my morals, even if I'm the only one standing. I will never compromise my principles or values to get elected or reelected. And I do believe that, uh, character matters, principles matter, and I am the most principled candidate up here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Krishna?
Sai Krishna is the best candidate for Frisco, because he empathizes the resident. He can walk in your shoes, and I will be in the neighborhood, and I understand better than anybody. Community health is my, uh, part of my profession, and, uh, I always, always want to be within the people, listen to them, understand, get the things done. I'm an action-oriented person. My parents have taught me how to do the math. To do the math, you don't need it, too much experience. You, if you know where the money is coming from, where the money is going to, how you are allocating, what is most important, and how much you're saving for the rainy day, that is also most important. Burdening ourselves, overshooting ourselves is going to, I mean, we are going to live in the debt. in the debt. So we need to start first prioritizing. If you know to prioritize the things, then certainly the city is going to be heading in a right direction. And I promise, you can count on my number. My number is not 911, but you can count on me. I will be there for your call within 15 to 20 minutes, no matter what, where I am in Frisco, I can be at your door. And also, from morning till evening, so far, you didn't have any councilmen, but I'm going to be available for you. Any city issues, I can be your voice, and I can be available for you. One phone call, I can get the city at your doors, and I promise it, and I take accountable for you. For everything what I do, I take accountable. I don't blame anybody else. So thank you. Please vote for me, Sai Krishna. You blessed me last time with 14 and a half thousand. You make me a councilman this time. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Well, thank you all for your comments this evening. Thank you for joining us. It's been kind of a wild ride the last two days getting all these candidate forms together and putting it all together, so thank you so much for being a part of all of that. And I do want to say, before I turn it over for your final remarks, thank you to all of the candidates for putting your name out here and being a part of this. We wouldn't have the democracy we live in today if we didn't have people to stand up and say, here, I'm ready to run. So I thank all of you for doing that and being a part of it, being willing to come here in this space and share your ideas with us. We couldn't thank you more. So thank you so much for that. And with that, any other final comments?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can always say again, a reminder that early voting starts April 19th, and of course, the election is May 1st. So hopefully, you got a better understanding of who the candidates are tonight. And of course, the beautiful thing about having this online is you can share it if you know people who didn't get to tune in and make sure that they are informed before they go to the polls. Shameless plug, because I have to, communityimpact.com, and I'm excited to, we have questions and answers with all the candidates, so you can learn about them further there, and the chamber does as well.
Yep, go to friscochamber.com/vote. Not only do we have information about candidates, but also polling locations, times, all of the things you need to know to get ready to go to the polls.
All right, well, Chris, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being a part of this and co-moderating with me. This was my first stab at it, and I think it was a-
You did great.
I'll come back.
Anytime.
So with that, we're going to go ahead and sign off for the evening with our broadcast. Our candidates can go home, get some sleep before busy early voting season. And with that, good morning, good evening, and good night.
All of it.
See y'all later.